He's coming. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. They've approved the minutes for the March 8th meeting.
All five were here. So you can approve them.
All five were here, yes.
Um, at the meeting, yeah. So the three of yous could, whatever.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the March 8th meeting.
Hey, Bill, I'm on here if you're looking for me.
Yeah, we just took a vote on the March 8th minutes. Have you had a chance to review them?
Yes, I have. Damon Tenney, OI.
All right.
Okay, good.
Oh, we might as well move on to the public hearing, special. Special site plan review for 47 Milford Street.
The plans are in that pool, Bill.
On line.
Nile should be on.
And it's very hard to hear, and it's not too clear.
Hi, this is Randy Waterman. This is Randy Waterman from WDA Design Group. I cannot get the video to work, but I am on audio, so I will be able to see through this way.
Hold on one second, I'm just gonna read, I should have begun by reading the article into the record from the Milford Daily News. Put my heaters on. In accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 11, notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held by teleconference or in person on Monday, March 22nd, 2021, at 7:05 in the Mendon Town Hall, 20 Main Street, Mendon, Mass. To consider a special site plan review for renovation of a 2,500 square foot formerly Taylor rental for use as a medical marijuana dispensary facility located at 47 Milford Street in Mendon. The remaining 4,956 of the building will be used for future storage or warehouse purposes. Owner of the property is a camping owner, partners LLC, 110 Turnpike Road, Suite 114, Westboro, Mass. And that was advertised in the Milford Daily News on 35 and 312. And once again, instructions for the meeting are as always. If you're called upon, we're gonna allow the applicant to speak first, then the board will ask his questions, then we'll open to the community. Either raise your hand, or and or on the computer, I guess is the way you can raise your hand on the computer, too. But, and you'll be called upon, say your name and where you live, and then we can we can address your question. If the board can't answer, we'll ask the applicant to answer. There'll be no cross talk during the meeting, please. All right, so on to the applicant. Just one set of plans here, Gil, or?
It's at the back, yes. It's back of the folder.
All right. Okay, will allow the applicant to speak at this time?
Todd, can you hear me? Yeah. Can you hear me?
Your mics, I know it's weird.
Okay. Yeah, we're getting
A lot of feedback.
Again, this is Randy Waterman from WDA Design Group. We are in Westboro, and we are the civil engineers and landscape architects for this project. Also here tonight is Todd Sullivan, the applicant for the project and the owner of the property, as well as Nile McManus, the contractor and building supervisor. And I believe Bruce Finney is also online? Not sure. In any event, I'll give you I will describe
Very tough to hear him.
Okay to begin?
Yes, if you could, well, some of the people on the meeting are having trouble hearing you.
Okay, I'll, I'll pull my speaker in closer here. So it's Randy Waterman, WDA Design Group, and I will explain the existing property and then the proposed project. The existing site. I'm, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you clear.
Yeah, that's a little better.
Okay, yeah, I can hear you very well. So I'll, I'll explain the site first. The site is 4.5 acres. Are you hearing a big echo?
I'm not getting any echo, bud.
Uh, the site is four and a half acres, has about 360 feet of frontage on Milford Street. Which is, the street address is 47 Milford Street, and that is also known as Route 140. Uh, the site contains a building that is about 7,500 square feet, and that was most recently used as a Taylor rental facility.
Yeah, excuse me.
Route 16.
Excuse me, that, uh, the route is actually Route 16. Not Route 14.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Um, the, the building was most recently used as a Taylor rental facility, and there's about a third of an acre of parking over on the west side of the building. The site is connected to the municipal water, and it is served by a private septic system. There are several large easements across through the property. There is a 125-foot wide New England Power Company easement that crosses from east to west through the middle of the site. And then there is a 30-foot wide Tenneco gas transmission easement that essentially bisects the site in two in a northerly to southerly direction. Just to the north corner of the northernmost corner of the site, there's a small wetland that enters the property and then follows to the south along the property boundary, where it connects to an intermittent stream, and then it narrows its width until it flows off of the site along the southerly boundary. The building itself is located on the high end of the site. It's about an elevation of 330 feet. It's fairly flat around the building, and then it slopes to the south down to about elevation 292. So from the front all the way to the back of the site, there's a drop of about 38 feet. The property is zoned general business out adjacent to the street, to the street frontage and for 200 feet back, and then the site is zoned for rural residential use. The property has the benefit of a variance that was granted to the property on June 30th of 2016, which allows the business use to extend into the residential district for the entire property. The proposed project, as described in our application cover letter, is to renovate the north end of the building, just 200, 2,544 squeet, square feet at the north end of the building, and that would be for use as a marijuana dispensary. The remaining 4,950 square feet of the building would be retained for storage or warehousing uses. The site work that is included with the renovation includes, um, we are going to adjust the driveway as you enter from the street to make it easier for vehicles, vans and delivery, small delivery vehicles to turn into the parking lot and be able to back into a secure parking area next to the building for loading and unloading. We would be creating 15 total spaces on site, 10 of those are for the marijuana use, and five of those would be retained for the warehouse use in the future. We would also be creating a new walkway at the front entrance to the building, security fencing, site lighting, and landscape improvements that are all shown on the site plans that we have included. There would be separate access to the building from the front. You can see the front entry across from the parking. There's a handicap space at that entrance, and there would be a separate egress walkway around the back of the building, and so we would have separate entry for staff, visitors, and deliveries. There would be a secure enclosure on the north end of the building so that vehicles could back into and next to the building for delivery and pickup, and that could be, that is gated so that it could be locked as required for security purposes. The dumpster is also located within that secure area. The project will be serviced by the existing septic system, and we will be filing a notice of intent for the, with the Conservation Commission for any work that is within the 100-foot buffer zone. We do not anticipate any alteration of wetland resources, just buffer zone work only. We believe the project is compatible with other similar businesses, similar sized businesses along this section of Route 16. We think it's a good reuse of an abandoned building, and which will be brought into compliance with the current code. And that's basically what we have proposed for the site, and Todd, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the business end of things, or if you want to have Matt talk about the architecture of the building?
Let's start about the architecture first, and we can answer any questions when we're all done with that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So fundamentally speaking, this is a pretty routine and typical medical marijuana dispensary or adult use dispensary. It's mostly isolated to interior space planning and improvements, and it's the intention to ensure that, you know, the design entirely conforms with all CCC requirements, including any local municipal requirements. Architecturally speaking, on the outside of the building, there is almost no modifications other than the tweaks to the entrances, the provision of awning at the entry and the security slash privacy film applied to the windows. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but it's a relatively straightforward solution on our end.
Well, in, in the past, Mendon has always taken an approach of, uh, they, you know, at the time this building was built, um, you know, Mendon didn't really have any design structures in place. Currently, we look for our applicants to do some, um, you know, some alterations to the exterior of the buildings to make them look more suitable to the architecture in Mendon. Trying to move away from the steel building look. Um, and, you know, is the, some of the buildings, if you look down on 140, and even, um, some of the additional buildings that have, that are being constructed within town now, we've gone to, you know, we've looked for them to, uh, to render drawing where the results are gonna be more towards a feel of Mendon, whether it be some type of siding or stonework or, or whatever you may have on the exterior of the building. I didn't know if the applicant, you know, would entertain that, or, but, um, as these buildings move along, we're looking to upgrade them. You know, what Mendon's apparent design qualities are going to be moving forward.
So this is Nile McManus, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, good evening, everybody, and thank you for taking the time to hear our special permit. So I'm a consultant, I'm also gonna be the builder of the, of the adult use dispensary. So yes, we would, we would work with the city. I'd work with Matt, who has designed over 20 or 30 of these dispensaries. As a company, we have built over probably 50 on a national level, and, you know, whatever, we want dispensaries just reflective of Mendon's and as tasteful to the city of Mendon. So I, we'd definitely be willing to work with the city and show you some renderings along with Matt, who's designed multiple of these to bring the building up to the standard of what Mendon's trying to achieve in the rest of the town.
We appreciate that. Also, did you guys have a chance to, was this forwarded to Jeff Walsh?
See, I, I don't know.
Have you worked with that town consultant yet on this?
Uh, no, we may have received the submission directly to the town, so we have not sent it out to anyone. I assume the town would do that directly, but we can
Yeah, we, we have not received his report back. I can check with him whether he received those plans or not, but I, I'm not even sure if you're familiar with them, they're Graves Engineering out of Worcester.
Yes, yes, we've worked with them before, yeah. I just, I know our office did not send it, we weren't asked to send it, but we, we could if it hasn't, so if you could at least find out if they have been sent or not, that would be great. We could certainly get plans delivered to them right away.
Yeah, we'll check, we'll check tomorrow morning.
Okay, perfect.
And what we'll do is, we'll, Jeff Walsh, I'm sure, we'll have to rush it up with him and find out where he's at with it, but, you know, we certainly can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, at this time, um, I think it's hearing, I think, unless the board has any other questions.
What was the final outcome on the renderings, Bill? This is Damon.
So Matthew McGeorge here. We can provide, presumably, if there's any codified or design guidelines, we'd be happy to look at those. Otherwise, we can provide some proactive rendered updates that would suit the project budgets and goals, and we can provide those within the next week or two. You know, assuming it would be conditional on the approval, there's no problem issuing that.
Rendering of the front of the building, is that brick on the bottom section, or are you just putting like a siding, a vertical side?
Well, you know what, to move forward from this, why don't we just, what we generally look for is you to obviously provide a rendering that, uh, you know, you feel comfortable with cost-wise, and, and, you know, in the board, moving forward, the board can discuss those further. You know, if, uh, we don't have any specific guide, uh, design guidelines in writing, we just request that the applicants, you know, do their best to achieve what we're looking, what our goal is to, what Mendon's gonna look like moving forward. So if you, if you want to provide those, what you have available, we'd be more than happy to entertain those.
That's fine. Thank you, Megan, I do, well, the design team will work on, yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Other than that, I mean, I can open up questions to the community, but I, I think we might want to reserve those for the next meeting, uh, so Jed, so our consulting engineer can take a look at the plan and provide us back the information he needs. And we can continue it to the next hearing. Date, which would be, what's the next date of our meeting?
April 12th.
April 12th? If that's acceptable?
Yeah?
Yeah, if you could provide that, we'll continue the hearing till April 12th, so we can get our consultant's report in from Jeff Walsh. And, you know, I'll Somebody talking in the background, could you please hold that? Um, but yeah, if you could, um, you know, if you could bring them to the April 12th meeting, uh, provide them for the April 12th meeting, and then we'll have the consultant's remarks, you know, we can go over them all at the same time.
Okay. That's not a problem on the architectural side.
You might request or look for, or, um, potentially, you know, if those are prepared, you can work that out with the town engineering consultant, but.
Yep, yeah, if you can just let us know tomorrow, Nile, maybe you could check back with the town and see if they, those plans were delivered, but if not, we'll get a set over there tomorrow to Graves.
Yeah, I'll touch base with Gil in the morning.
All right. Gentlemen, so I need a motion on the floor to move the, to continue the meeting to
April 12th.
April 12th.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 47 Milford Street to April 12th at
Just 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John, aye.
There we are.
Bill, aye. Damon, aye, unanimous. All right, so we'll talk to you on April 12th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We're also gonna need more copies of the plans, so everybody can see them.
Okay, yep.
See if, see if we can get from the applicant to that meeting, something we can post on the easel.
Well, when I talk to Nile tomorrow.
When you talk to him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell him we'd like something for the easel.
Right.
For the community.
That's the only set of plans they submitted with, with the
That's all I got.
Yeah, that's, that's not gonna go to yet.
No, that's, yeah, I need bifurc, I mean, I need a magnifying glass. What?
They need to send a full set to Jeff.
Yeah, and once we work that out tomorrow.
They didn't send a big set.
I know, we should have asked them for it. Being as it's May, that takes care of that for tonight. Yeah, take those, too. All right, on to the next item. The applicant in the room is the applicant's representation, I should say. And this is on the continuation of public hearing on 35 Cape Road. Before we get started, I have counsel here with us tonight to go over a few of the items that have, seem to have arisen under this application. Cindy Amara, she, she represents a town for us, and while we're able to get some answers on some items, including setbacks and stuff like that, there still is the questioning of the use of this building. And we have a 31,000 square foot building, I've seen your waivers, you've asked us to request this, to waive the special permit requirement. I don't see any grounds for that, especially we haven't really declared a use for the entire building. I mean, it's really the site plan review, um, if you follow the steps within our zoning bylaws, the site plan review requires the use be established. And that hasn't been done yet, not for the entire building. And the only thing, you know, this board would be able to do would be to allow the most restrictive use, which would be an as-of-right use, but wouldn't include industrial or or light manufacturing or any of that. You know, so I'm not sure where we step forward from here. I mean, I talked to you a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago about, you know, doing, doing a special permit on this building. It's a 31,000 square foot building. There's no, the, the bylaws is not ambiguous. It says in three different places, 10,000 square feet or more, the building needs to have special permit. So if I were, if the board was to elect to approve a waiver, I don't think that sets, number one, a great precedent for the town, and number two, sets the town up for potential lawsuits from others. And I don't think that's where the town wants to be either. I mean, I'm not mistaken in
No, I, I'm looking at some of the information I hadn't seen before, and some of it doesn't make much sense, and it's a little inconsistent to me. This page two of nine of what's attached to the notice of meeting today.
Yep.
It, it talks about initially, you were looking at wholesale manufacturing contractors yards and warehousing. You acknowledge that it is in fact a large-scale development because it's more than 10,000 square feet, and therefore you request a waiver from the development impact assessment that's required for such a project. And on the other hand, you're trying to say we shouldn't view it as a large-scale project because you only have one tenant so far. But I don't know how, I've never seen a site plan quite like this, and I don't know how the planning board can look at an application and make a determination if the site is appropriate for the use without knowing the use. So I'm sitting here looking at a 10,000, an over 10,000 square foot building, I think it's 31,000?
31,200.
And it's unclear to me what you want to do, so how do we determine what type of traffic impacts there will be, or, you know, your parking or anything like that, and then you acknowledge that it's a big development and seek waivers? And one of the things you seek a waiver for is and I, I'm just sitting here with more questions than I have answers, and I don't know how, I don't know how the board can approve what I'm sitting here looking at, and I may not have seen everything, and I'm more than happy to hear you out, but I, I just don't know what the site plan But I just don't know what the site plan is for, if it's not for a. I'm trying to figure out how we meet the requirements of site, what the building is going to be used for. How do you figure, oh, your parking, how do you determine whether they should grant a waiver, even if they wanted to, without knowing what is going to happen there? And I, if you were to say, just because we have one tenant, that doesn't, that could defeat the whole point of a site plan review.
Excuse me, Eric Hodge, 3 Bates Street. Town council's mic has gone out again.
Fortunately, it appears we having a problem with a cable eight issue. Just as it occurs, just keep advising Dan that it's cut out, and we'll try and make sure that you get a responsible response to any question. All right. I'll let you answer her, because I'm not sure where we're going with this either.
So my name is Brian Nelson. For the record, I'm civil engineer and land surveyor with the project. So this is a little bit out of my wheelhouse in terms of kind of the structuring of the permits. But our applicants, John Boja and Fran Marku, are the two trustees of 35 Cape Road LLC, should be on tonight, and I think would like to speak to this. I do want to make sure everybody's received the letters from Peter Dawson. There was a letter, 20th, 2021.
Is that the Merrick one?
Yes.
And I received also one from the machine shop and another one from a biomedical, which.
Should be in the.
Yeah.
Which are in.
So I've got copies of those tonight if people haven't seen those. But again, we've mentioned before that, right now, basically, this project is going forward on Roar Fabrication, which is a light metal fabrication shop that would like to move from its present location to this site on Cape Road. We've got a letter from them that basically explains a little bit about what they do and the nature of what they manufacture. We also have a letter from their upstairs abutter in their present location, which speaks a little bit to, you know, basically their just lack of offensiveness to abutting tenants and surrounding properties. So I just want to make sure everybody's got those, and again, those were submitted. And again, I think probably Mr. Dawson is best to speak to these issues. I'm not sure if John or Peter are aligned to think it would be good to talk. But at least from my understanding is that basically Roar will occupy about 9,600 square feet of this building. Another similar use tenant, I think, looking to occupy about 5,600 square feet, and again, looking at a maximum of five or six employees. And the owners, the applicants, 35 Cape Road, have properties over in the Hope Dale Industrial Park. So they've got a similar business model set up, and basically, the plans were designed roughly with looking at one parking space for 1,000 square feet of floor space, and I think that's consistent with the bylaw. We've got more parking than is needed. I think there are 51 or 53 spaces proposed on our plan. So we've got, I believe, a surplus of parking. We were pretty, I think, clear, and certainly the narrative and the request for waivers, that, you know, these are the two tenants we can identify right now. And as the other ones come into the mix, you know, if the approval needed to be modified in any way, we would be back before you to talk about that use. These are the two uses that we have locked in, potentially locked in right now. And again, I'll defer to John, if John's out there, if you want to add anything.
Hi, John Boja. So I guess my problem here is we've applied for our permits, and we've applied for the exemption based on what was the intended use. And we're in the, we fit the zone exactly as it's described. We're doing this on a speculative basis. You know, it's about a $6 million project for us. We have two tenants of use right now. You're asking me to state the use of proposed or proposed use in a speculative manner, which I can't do. I'm putting this out as spec. I'm gambling with the town amendment, and you're telling me bring you all the information about all the tenants. It just doesn't make any sense. I'm bringing you the information about the two tenants we have. They clearly meet your definition 100%. They don't understand what the problem is. Fran, if you want to step in, go ahead, Fran Marku. My partner is online. I'll let him speak to it. Go ahead, Fran.
Hi, Fran Marku, can you hear me okay? Yeah. Yeah, okay. We.
Yeah, sounds great.
Yeah, we appreciate the fact that you guys all work, girls and guys, work hard for these planning boards and all boards, but, you know, we follow the rules, and we've done it in other towns, and you can see an example of our work, and, you know, the, we typically, when we build these buildings, we follow the guidelines of what our first use is. And if we have to change it, then we go back to another meeting and we make the change, or we don't make the change if it's not allowed. It's pretty straightforward stuff, and it meets the guidelines of your zoning requirements. And if you, we aren't asking for something that isn't there. We're asking for what exists. And you asked for a special, you asked if we went, you know, said, why don't we do it for a special permit? Well, let me ask you this. If we go for a special permit, is there other things that we're going to have to do that we haven't already done? You know, I understand we'd have to re- re-notice the abutters, put a newspaper ad, apply for it, but is there something that's going to crop up its so-called ugly head later on, and we're going to be faced with, you know, six weeks down the road, finding out that this process won't work?
I mean, potentially, I can't answer that question. I mean, that's why the special permit process happens. You know, it, and is it different from site plan review? Yeah, legally, it is. We all know the difference between a special permit and site plan review. And to be honest with you, after serving on this board for 12 years, the legality of it is special permit has teeth, and a lot of times, site plan review doesn't. So from, in regards to protecting the community, yeah, special permit is important. And that's why we, that's why it's in the bylaw. You know, it's, if you are successful through the special permit process and convince the board that it's good for the town, it's good for, you're going to be a good neighbor, it's good for the town, it's good for the well-being of the town, then, you know, that gives validity to the application moving forward. And that's why those processes are set up. Now, there's no ambiguity in the bylaw. I mean, I've read this thing 10 times since this thing started. And in three different places, it says a building 10,000 square feet or more requires special permit. We run them concurrently, so they could have been run at the same time. I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding why that wasn't done.
Well, it's, I guess, I guess we have a difference of opinion, legal opinion. We have three different firms, three different attorneys, feeling that the section 57 reads as we understand it, and it's ambiguous enough to create some issues. So we're just trying to resolve those issues in any way we can to make it right. We're trying to be good neighbors. We've produced a good plan. We've had it overviewed by town engineer. We are trying to do the right thing here, but it gets, you know, where is the end? And where is, you know, what, if we enter into a special permit procedure at this point, everybody here has seen everything that we have. I mean, what else is there that's going to crop up? And we've already, we've given you the notice that this fellow, who is going to be our first tenant, will be a good neighbor. I mean, it's just, he's been there where he is 20 years. That's why we did the extra documentation to say, this is who I am. He's a Mendon resident. We're just looking at.
And I'm not disagreeing with any of that. I mean, we're looking at this relative to a process that the board needs to follow legally. You know, these bylaws, when they're written, you know, we take into great account what we're asking. And, you know, you're talking about 56 that says, any business use or retail use permitted above by right in excess of 10,000 requires special permit. That's, that's something that says of right. What if your intention is of something that isn't of right?
I don't think I know what you're asking.
I think the issue here is the board isn't in a position to permit a 31,000 square foot building without knowing what it could potentially be used for. And you can craft what you think it may potentially be used for, and, you know, you can do it in a broad fashion, and then the board can evaluate it. And if your tenants come in and they're less intrusive, no problem at all. But if you were to just look at this piecemeal, you'd be able to completely circumvent the requirement that it's clear in the Mendon zoning bylaws that projects of this size require special permits, and they require them all over the zoning, not just in this district. And they require additional studying to be done, one of which is traffic that you've asked for a waiver for. And that's because the magnitude of the size of the project could have tremendous impacts. Now, say your tenant falls apart. If you have a site plan saying you want to use a 100,000 or 31,000 square foot building for whatever commercial use is allowed with a special permit in that zone, then whatever use you come up with is within that, and you're covered and good to go. Or if you want to just build a small building for the use you know, then we know the parameters of what the potential impacts to allowing a sized building like that are. But when you want a large building that is, by definition, in Mendon, a big project, and you don't know what is defined, how can we sit here, even if it's the best tenant in the world? We don't know what the universe of the potential impacts are. And it's unfortunate, your client or you may not have any intention of doing anything but being the best neighbor possible and running the best business possible. But by process and by history, not necessarily in Mendon, when you allow people to face things like this without looking at the whole, you can get incredible creep, and then people start, well, I already built it, and I've already got these people in, so you got to let me have a waiver. And that's why there's a very early-on attempt to get as much information about what the potential use of the project is going to be. I mean, this is, this is not like it's a mall, and you don't know the anchor stores, but you know, you're going to have a mall, and you're going to have retail, and you're going to have this, that, and the other. But you do know you're going to have some sort of commercial or some sort of universe of tenants you would want in there. And I, I don't see how you don't need a special permit. And, you know, there's nothing that says you have to do it with site plan, but it's more efficient, and that's usually the way it's done. But I also don't see, in your site plan application, enough of what it is you're proposing. I don't, I don't see enough information. You say there can be no more than, what, 30 parker, parking, 30 employees? How do we know that for the rest of the building? I mean, I don't, I just, I just don't see enough detail for the board to do its job to let you come into town and be a good neighbor.
In all, if you want me to address the issues as they're stated, I'll try to. The parking issue is pretty straightforward. It's dictated by what you have for tenants. If we brought a tenant in, and as part of your process, that tenant didn't fit your needs, we would have to go for special permit. It would be, it would be something, it wouldn't be something we would be allowed. And then we would deal with the parking and all the other things that you would have to deal at that point. However, our experience has shown in what we're building that our parking amount that we have allotted is more than enough, more than sufficient. I have an industrial park that has multitude, 24 buildings, and we, and we manage the parking very well. And you can check with the town of Hope Dale. I've been a great neighbor, a great taxpayer. My neighborhood people are all happy with me. Been there 20 years. We're not asking for something that doesn't exist. You have bylaws, and we're following them. It's just that you're asking a question that can't be answered, how many parking spots for a potential tenant in the future? If it's what we are already picking, yeah, we're going to meet that, we're going to, we're going to manage that parking. It's going to be enough. Choosing something other than what's allowed, then we have to go forward before your board and either ask for a special permit then or do something else. Right now, we are, we're meeting what you require.
Well, except for, and I'll give you an example. I received a letter today, well, via email, and it's in my package in front of me here, from one of your proposed tenants. And they're biomedical. You know, for.
We don't have, no, no, I think you're reading it wrong.
Oh, they're referencing Roar Fabricating, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to stress that we're giving all the information we have at this time. We have two, one tenant who's a strong candidate, another one who's very strong as well. And that's the use we feel fits the zone, fits the site. You know, until we lock in the rest of the building, it's really hard to say what that will be. And, you know, again, as we stated in our narrative, that.
So is there any intention for mostly light manufacturing, or is?
That's correct.
I mean, is that something we can zone this building as? But still, we still have the process of site, of special permit. That can't be over, can't be leapt over. I mean, you know, it just, I've never heard of anybody requesting a waiver on, on special permit.
I don't think we requested a waiver from the special permit. If I remember correctly, we requested a waiver, a waiver from the large project review and the traffic impact assessment. And again.
Okay.
Traffic impact, we thought, again, looking at the Hope Dale Industrial Park as a model, looking at your bylaws requiring one space per thousand square feet. We've got 32 spaces are required for this building. We've got 50 provided on the site. So, you know, we're one and a half plus times in exceedance of what your bylaws are calling for. And again, with talking with Fran and John, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about how the site laid out and the amount of parking. So I feel like we've, we've done a pretty good job at trying to be conservative with what we've modeled. If we had tenants locked in for all 31,000 square feet, I think this would be an easier conversation. We could say, yes, this use checks the box, this one does or doesn't, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, what about the, what about the impact assessment? I mean, I'd be concerned at waiving an impact assessment on industrial.
We talked about some of the impacts. The one we asked for a waiver from was the, the traffic impact. We did talk about environmental impacts and all that stuff. That was one of the documents that was submitted with the original submittal.
Okay.
And I can dig that out, or I can resubmit that. But that was part, basically, spent a lot of time, and I think paid a lot of respect to the zoning bylaws and the applications. So, you know, we were pretty thorough about that and how we analyzed it. And certainly, we talked about that at the first meeting. So last meeting, had we had the time to discuss that, I think it would have been helpful to have come to this meeting, at least.
I didn't even have the waiver request the last meeting, so.
Those were all submitted originally. Those were all submitted.
They had submitted to Jeff, or were they?
Sent it, we dropped off copies here. We sent it all to Jeff. And again, for me personally, I have to speak and say that when we got involved in the planning for this, and Fran and John can probably attest to this, where, you know, they wanted to get this project filed, I slowed them down. I slowed them down because I reached out to the town. Almost every department.
December 22nd.
You know, to set up some kind of a preliminary meeting so we could discuss the red flags. And nobody, nobody got back to us. So again, I've been doing this for 25-ish years. Always try to go into a town or municipality and say, here's a 50% plan. Let's talk about its pluses and minuses. And we reached out on so many occasions to do that and.
Yeah, I only saw one email, it was in December.
There were phone calls made, there were emails sent. And so, so again, there's understandably, there's frustration on our side.
Well, certainly had attended a meeting and requested.
So.
But, you know, during COVID, it's been a little bit different with remote meetings and stuff. So it, you know, it's been difficult to keep all ducks in a row. But with that being said, I mean, at any time, I mean, this is an open public meeting. Yeah, you can, you can attend and ask a question.
We did have two documents that were submitted with the original application. One was a narrative, which basically just talked about the project. The other one was basically a document that did a couple of things. It talked about the waivers we requested. Some of them were bylaw, things that I think were a little unnecessary. We went through those, I think, line by line. We did talk about environmental impacts. We talked about fiscal impacts. We talked about community impacts. And basically we did ask for, you know, basically the waiver from the, it's the last item, considered a large development. We did ask for a waiver of that. And again, that was basically due to the.
Yeah, and we discussed, and we discussed that. And I was, and I questioned why there wasn't special permit. And I questioned why, you know, at that point in time, whether we wanted to, you want to withdraw and resubmit with the, the, with the special permit. And you guys elected to say, no, we'd like to get the site plan review approved. Not knowing, you know, what the ramifications on special permit were ever going to be, whether I was going, whether this board as a whole would ever intend to waive that. Because you can't get a building permit until that site plan, that special permit's had. I mean, unless the board waives it. And I can't speak for all the members of the board, but my intention is that we put a process in for a reason. You know, as of right uses are as of right. Ones that aren't as of right, a building over 10,000 square feet has the special permit process for a reason. It allows the community to come in, be concerned about the impact it will have to the community, get some, their opportunity to say that. They don't always understand during site plan review, while they're hearing soil testing and all that other stuff, what the exact ramifications are. They're looking for you to, to come in for a special permit at the same time and, and declare, you know, the well-being for the community. What's the well-being for the community? And, and I place a lot of prudence on that's what the special permit is requiring. And that's why we have it in there. We don't just put it in there just because we want it in there. You know, Menden doesn't deal with buildings over 10,000 square feet very often. So if for, for the, just to come in and ask us to waive the special permit process when you know it's in there and it's in three different places. And, you know, just, I mean, it would have been easier to task this the way that I, the way I had recommended from the beginning. And it would, we'd probably done this process by now. This probably, you know, we've relist it, we do the site plan review and the special permit at the same time we went down.
I think to Mr. Marku's question, in terms of what would be the additional things looked at? You know, we've talked about traffic, I think is the biggest one. What would be some of the other things? We've dug a lot of those other ones out in our narrative and, and the waiver requests. So that's, I'm just trying to get constructive feedback so I can come back at the next meeting and say.
Why do we have a special permit on any building?
We've looked at all these things.
What is special permit for? You explain to me. Why have it at all?
I, I'm not following what you're asking.
I might have the next building that says, can you waive special permit? Because they're a insurance agency and they don't affect anybody. Can you waive special permit? And that's an as of right use, but, but I'm just using it as an example. Maybe it's something that's on the fringe, but requires special permit. There's a reason why it requires special permit.
With, I get that. What I'm asking is, you know, there are part of the special permit process. We presented a lot of information. We're compliant with stormwater. We've, we've talked in pretty good detail about.
It's all required on the site plan.
I get that. I'm, I'm asking what would be, what can we focus on so we can come back prepared for the next meeting? That's all.
I think one of the main differences is the standard of review and the level of public participation and the findings that have to be made. So in terms of actual information, you might want to talk with the town's engineer to get a better sense of what the technicalities are between what you've actually submitted and what missing information there is. But the process is different. And the bylaw requires a special permit because the town has made a decision that these types of uses can be perfectly fine. Or they could be a disaster without some more in-depth input from everybody. So it's more process than necessarily information in what you've presented. And it's the level of participation and it's the standard of review. And, you know, they can't just deny a special permit because they don't want to. They have to make certain findings. And if they don't, then they, you know, they're, they're deniable and stand up. The fact that they are requiring a special permit doesn't mean the special permit won't be granted. And maybe for your particular technical questions, maybe, I mean, it's unfortunate the engineer for the town isn't here, but maybe the two of you can best sit down and he can explain to you what additional information you would need to present. But without having a special permit, you won't be able to get a building permit. Because the way the bylaws are written, the size of this project, as you, you know, you guys even acknowledge, kicks you into this different project just because this may be the best thing to happen to Menden. No one's casting any dispersions on the project or the efforts you've made to date or the likelihood that you're going to ultimately prevail. But it's a process. And we have to be fair to the process and to anyone who comes before the board. And that's why we have bylaws. So it's clear that if you're doing something big, you know, it may not be that big for a lot of people, but for Menden, this is a big project. And it's designed as a big project. And so you just have to go through the hoops. I don't know exactly everything that you have in fact submitted, but I am confident that our engineer, who has reviewed everything, would be more than capable of sitting down and answering your technical questions that way as to how to most efficiently get through the process and not delay you. I know that's not really the answer you want, but I can't give you technical answers.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm looking for, for just.
Brian, Brian. Brian, can I, this is John.
Sure.
Can I, can I address that? So my question is, we presented this to the town. It's been through graves. That is your overview engineer. If this is a large project and we presented it for the review, then why didn't he pick up on this when he sent back the review minutes? We have no notice on the review that this requires a special permit. We followed all your regulations. We've done everything we're supposed to do. And when I read your bylaws, it does not speak to the size of the building. It speaks to use, which is a function of the building department. And now you tell me the building department is the one that ultimately determines whether we need a special permit. So shouldn't this be approved based on use as we presented, which falls under your bylaw? And then if we get to a point where we bring you a tenant and ask for a permit that requires a special review and special permit, at that point, it would be triggered. I guess I don't get this. I've been developing for 46 years. Your bylaws are pretty clear. We followed them. The intent of the use of the building, which is what we're speaking of, falls within your bylaws. We're 100% compliant. This started off with a buffer issue, which we want great lengths to prove not to be an issue. And now here we are being told we need special permit. So what you're telling me is in your bylaws, it specifically states that a building over 10,000 square feet requires a special permit. I'm not finding that, nor did any of our attorneys find that. So that's my concern. If you can answer that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Excuse me, excuse me one second. It's right in the use table. Number 56 clearly states, and I will read it. Any business and or retail use permitted above by right in excess of 10,000 square foot building requires special permit.
It specifically says permitted above, above. So that would be above. Your bylaws are clear. It says anything permitted above at this line.
Yeah, well, okay, if you want to go to industrial, it's also covered under.
You don't want to go to industrial. We want light manufacturing, which is allowed within this zone. We, it says above. It's very clear. There's no ambiguity there. I put this before three very specialized people for bylaws. You have an ambiguity in there that says above 57. It's incorrect. You've led us to believe this is a use of right. And we will have to challenge the way that's written. We don't want to go there, but I feel you're reading it incorrectly.
You're going to fight the town on a special permit process because of something that was, there was some ambiguity in, in the use table.
That's correct. We spent a lot of money here.
All right, then we'll, then the board will have to address other issues of waiver that may not be complying with our current bylaw now.
Well, what we're asking you is under special permit, is there anything else that you see now that's going to create an issue? We don't have a use that is over 10,000 square feet. We meet your definition. So we're asking you to tell us exactly what it is you want on the special permit. We'll bring it to you for the next meeting and we'll ask you to give us an approval.
You just told me the whole building is being outlined as a light manufacturing.
No, I told you it is of right of use.
Right, right of use, light manufacturing, anything above that.
No, I'm, I'm meeting the definition of your business highway in my intent for the entire 31,200. My first tenant is under 10,000 square feet, light manufacturing. I have a second tenant who is just storage. I have a third tenant that I'm already looking at that is also storage. I fit well within your definition. And you're asking me for a special permit, which should be kicked off by your building department. So I want to know, what else do you want me to bring? I've already met all of your requirements, the traffic requirements. I bent to your request of your, your surrounding of butters. I got rid of the additional driveway. I'm trying to work with you, but I need you to detail what you want me to bring to you and I'll bring it to you.
I don't know what they've submitted and what they have. I think the engineers should talk to each other about what would be missing from a special permit application.
With all due respect, the engineer's reviewed this and he had no concerns with it. So why am I going back to an engineer that I've paid this town to bring in as your special review engineer review? Why am I paying for that if he's not reviewing it properly? He told us we had a few issues. We went through them. He sat at the last meeting and told you that he had no issue. So now why is there an issue? This is my question. Why is there an issue?
Let truth be told, and, you know, your gentleman's in the room here right now. This came up the night of the first meeting. This isn't like, we're not dropping this on you tonight. I mean, you read that.
With all due respect, it came up the second meeting. You were more concentrating on a butters and the buffer in the first meeting. The second meeting is when you said you had spoken with town council and that we were going to be required to do special permit. We did further investigation into it. We do not confer with town council, so we're coming back to you and saying, it's not a requirement, it's not in your bylaw, and we're fitting in perfectly to your bylaw. And all I'm saying is the building, it's use. Second, second meeting.
It actually came up the night of the first meeting because in a butter, who's the one that approached that issue?
And you went to town council to get that reviewed. It wasn't in the engineer.
Well, we were more, we were more dealing with the setback issue at that time.
That's correct. That's correct. So we can only address the issue you bring.
I had recommended at that time to withdraw the application and add, add the special.
You recommended that I went to industrial and went with special permit. And I said, it is not industrial use and I don't choose to do that. And I'm right back to, I have a use of right. I'm not going industrial because I don't have industrial and I'm trying to work with you. So I'm asking you to tell me, if I put this in as a special permit right now, as a use of right, where would you sit on this? I'm not going to waste any more time or any more money or any more aggravation on this. I just want you to give me some guidance here. We are in the habit of getting projects approved. I've been developing for over 46 years. I don't come into a town that doesn't want a project. We would rather walk away from this than spend any more money. 31,200 square feet of light manufacturing, which is allowed in your highway business, to bring you revenue, that's all we're interested in. If you don't want it, tell us so. We'll go to a town that does. It's real simple. I just want you to give me some guidelines. The bylaw is very ambiguous. We've taken it to three very, very good firms. They've told us we have a use of right and they told us that we should let you know. We've done our research. We know where we're coming from. And you have some ambiguity in your bylaw. And we should seek remedy for that ambiguity. We're not interested in that. We just want an answer from you. What do you want from us?
Are you now saying that you want this whole building to be 30, uh, light manufacturing?
We want the entire building to fit within your zoning of right for highway business, period.
For the use, are you asking us to make the whole building light manufacturing?
Yeah, because you didn't declare it on the application.
We'll make the whole building of use of right for the highway business zone. It's very specific. Any one of those uses is what we're interested in.
Your, your first.
So any as of right use?
That's correct.
Don't you understand that your first application didn't provide that? That was just a portion of the building. This is different to have it be.
We're, we're speculative developers. We're speculative developers. We go in, we place our money at risk. We come into your town, we're going to build 31,200 square feet of speculative building to fall within your use of right. We're taking a big gamble on Menden. And we're going to come to you with each one of our permit applications and say, this is a use of right. Do you agree? Give us a building permit. If you disagree, then you tell us, go for special permit. As I understand it, that's the way it's done. I could be wrong. I've been doing it for 46 years. I've never encountered anything like this. You set up the zone. We dealt with the whole buffer issue, the 200, the 100.
You know, within, within the industrial section, and I know you want to cordon this off to above or below, but in the industrial section of use table.
If I bring you an industrial use, I need a special permit. I agree.
But light manufacturing is in, in our use table is under industrial.
I am bringing you a specialized metal fabricator.
You're not, you're not listening to what I'm saying as far as the zoning bylaw. If you look under the table, it says industrial, the heading's industrial. If you go down to 59, it says into any industrial use. That means if light manufacturing falls under industrial, that applies.
I'm dealing with line 57 specifically. That's where I'm.
I know you are, but you just said you're doing light manufacturing. Light manufacturing falls under.
Industrial and then.
Under industrial.
Size of the building.
And then the size of the building quantitation.
Excuse me, it's Fran Marku for a second. If you look into 59, the table.
If you look into fifty-nine, the table A, it requires that any industrial use permitted by right in excess of ten thousand, in excess.
In excess.
Yeah, the building's thirty-one thousand square feet.
Read the line. The line says in any industrial use-
Use.
Permitted above by right in excess of ten thousand square feet building area. Doesn't say that the building is in excess of ten thousand. It says the building area that is the use is being used for.
Use is a function of the building.
Part here. Is it defendable? That's your question you're going to have to ask.
Counsel.
Merritt, please.
I think so. I think the whole thing is designed to have large buildings looked at more closely. That's my opinion. You can-
And the zoning specific says large buildings. You have that requirement, large building requirement. I didn't see that in your bylaw, a large building requirement under your zoning bylaw.
You're using a building in excess of ten thousand square feet for this purpose?
Yeah.
In aggregate, the building is being used as a matter of use. Specifically, your zoning says that any use greater than ten thousand. That is a function of your building department, not your planning. I'm sorry, I disagree with you, and I have three attorneys that disagree with you.
You can disagree with me.
Well, certainly, you know, I mean, you guys are skipping through the ropes here, and you can look at it how you want, and you can determine-
Well, I guess that's going to have to be determined by people powerful, more powerful than us, because we're not skipping through ropes. We're following your bylaws. That's what we're following.
I take the attention any town, when they write a bylaw and they're saying excess of ten thousand square feet, they mean the entirety of the building. They don't mean a use that's going to section a thirty-one thousand-
You specifically say use. You say use. You have ambiguity in the bylaw.
So as soon as you add the less, the next light manufacturing space to that building, now increase it in size of light manufacturing. So now I'm going to have to require-
That would be an assumption. If I come in with a storage facility that takes up twenty-one thousand two hundred square feet, I meet your definition.
Right, correct. But if you put something-
So we can talk ambiguity all day long. If I'm coming in with uses that meet your bylaw-
Ambiguity when I work with the town. Only ambiguity when I work. Instead of working with the town and just doing the special permit, following the process, you're utilizing the ambiguity of the bylaw.
No, you're using the ambiguity to deny it.
Submit something later. I am going to require a special permit.
We're asking you, under your special permit, do you see any furtherance that you could describe to us today?
It's a better opportunity for the community to have their opportunity to speak and for the board to make a decision on a general well-being of the town. That's what the special permit process has always been for. And I still go back to, you know, and I've, I have been doing this forty-seven years, but I've been doing this twelve, and I've been heavily involved. And I'll tell you right now, the legal teeth in a special permit is much greater than the legal teeth in site plan review.
And you're telling us exactly why we-
You can disagree with it how you want, but-
That's why we disagree with you, and that's why we-
Someone I've been to has stated that.
We don't feel we fall into special permit, so we don't have to worry about the teeth. I think what has to be concerned here is, is your bylaw defendable? Because we've spent a lot of money to get to this point. We've dealt with the buffer issues. We've given you legal opinions on this, and we're looking for you to tell us, under special permit, would you be willing to tell us what furtherance you'd be after? That's all we're asking you. We're just, we're trying to do what we do. We develop. I listened to one of your meetings where you were looking to bring developers into the town to develop further projects. We're developers. So if you want to have a relationship with developers, when they bring issues to you, you need to listen. Forty-six years of this tells me that what I did was well within your bylaw. I spent a lot of money. I thought it would be a project that would be welcome in Menden, and here we are. So maybe that bylaw needs to be tightened up. Maybe we'll be the force that tightens the bylaw up. I don't know. We might come back and say, under the bylaw, with the ambiguity that we're seeing, we're going to make you prove that out. So maybe we can sit down afterwards and have a discussion with council and have our council talk to our council.
All right. Yeah, why don't we continue it? And maybe that's what needs to happen. We don't need to have a remote meeting and, you know, and determine whether this can be worked out, you know? I mean, I don't, you know, when these things go to court, courts usually look for reasonableness. And I don't think the town's being unreasonable asking for a special permit on one of the largest buildings that are going to exist in the town of Menden. I think that the court may say, well, we don't find Menden's being unreasonable. It's a simple special permit process.
Well, I guess, you know, let's, why don't we do this? Why don't we do a continuance? Why don't we have council talk to our special council? Let's dig into it a little deeper. Last thing we want to do is be in court over this, but I can assure you, we've done enough of this to know that we're being reasonable as well. So we don't have a problem moving forward to see who's more reasonable. You know, you've talked to us about buffers, which don't apply to us. You've talked to us about being outside of our zone and being in direct contact with the residential zone. We listened to it. We have your Graves Engineering Review, which gave us a green light on what we submitted. And here we are, third meeting in, and we're still discussing things that are coming up. So as far as reasonableness goes, we have our money on the line. We're trying to develop in Menden. We're willing to go that route, but I think it would be best served if we just have council speak and see if we can work something out that's reasonable.
Mr. Chairman, Fran Marko again, just for a quick one. We have the willingness to show people what we've done, too. I have a park right down the road, and I try to look up. I know Mr. Dodge was very close, close to his house right there. And I tried finding contact. I had my son send out a LinkedIn to him to. So if he really wanted to meet with us, we'd be glad to show him what we have, show him the spaces, show what they look like, talk to our tenants. I've been there twenty years. You can talk to our Butters. I know a couple of them really well. Just to show that we're not, we don't do what some people anticipate that a big developer does. We have good businesses, and they're clean, and they run well, and they work well with the community. Somebody's going to be there eventually. And I honestly, W knows something better than W don't know, but I'm willing to anybody that's out there that's a butter that we can get together, you know, in a socially proper manner. Pandemic's funny. It used to be I could knock on a person's door and introduce myself, but during the pandemic with people having small kids, I have grandkids and stuff. I don't want to go knocking on somebody's door and inviting them over to something and putting them at risk, so. But I'm certainly willing to meet with somebody and show them what we've done, what we've done. They can look at it. It's there. It exists. You can talk to the Town of Hopedale. You can talk to management. You can talk to Butters. I have a good reputation there. I mean, I really done a good job, and the properties look nice. We have good tenants. They're clean. We meet all the guidelines. We follow the rules. We pay our taxes. And I understand this is hard because they're, like it or not, there is enough ambiguity there that other attorneys have said, and really good attorneys also, nothing of fault yours. But they've also, there's enough question there to raise the thing. We're willing to go to special permit, but we don't want to open up a door and just create more hassles for ourselves. And we're just, we're thinking we're going through everything we've done. But I don't know what else to say. But yeah, we're willing to meet with you privately with-
Where's the car? Are you over off of Plain Street right now?
Yeah. No, I'm not. I'm at my house, actually, right now.
Oh, I mean, the buildings you had built?
Yeah, I own nine of them over there. You know, I got the government building, the ATF building. There's five in a cul-de-sac. There's the new Sedex one I put up a year ago.
Could you email me the information on those, and I can meet up with you?
Certainly. I'd do it with any of your Butters, too. I don't have any problem. I'm pretty straight.
I'll send it out to the Butters if they elect, you know, to show up at the time we choose. But I'd like to go over and look at the site plan.
Sure. Feel free, if one of your Butters calls you, feel free to, my number's on the phone. Feel free to share it with them. I've had the same phone number for forty years.
Yeah, against numbers are both on the cover sheet of the tile.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm, I wasn't willing to meet with anybody. I'll wear my mask. I'll show you the stuff. You want to meet tenants that I have?
Yeah, I'll give you a call, and then I can send something out to anybody. We can post it on the website. You know, the time, we'll do it probably early next week sometime, hopefully.
Sure. I have no problem with it. You tell me the time, I'll be there. If you can, you'll reach out to me. Am I correct with your email? And then I'll give you all my information. I actually have my information, so whatever you want to do, call me.
Yeah, okay. Well, this time going to table all community questions. I think we heard from the community in significance at the last meeting. I think these technical issues are more governed to, you know, between the engineers and the process that the bylaw works out.
Motion to continue.
Before you make that motion, I'd just like to kind of stress what I had said is, in the interest of time, trying to make everybody's time move as efficiently as I can. I'll reconnect with Mr. Walsh. I talked to him probably in October of 2020, you know, before we really got any steam up on this project. I'll reconnect with him and talk to him. Any feedback I can get from the board as to where you think our waiver request or any of that stuff might be deficient or what other information? I'm happy to provide it. I just, I want to get you what you want, and I'd like to do it as timely as possible. That's all.
Yeah, well, it'd be better.
It's just trying to get you guys.
Yeah, it'd be better if you get out in front of it with Jeff because ultimately, we're going to rely on his, you know, his recommendation as far as any environmental or other subsequent issues. As far as the bylaw itself, I mean, that's coming down on the board. I mean, you know, we didn't write the bylaw, unfortunately, but we're responsible for it. Okay? And our duty is to the community and making sure that, you know, any project that comes before the town amended is good for the town. And, you know, if a year from now, a not as of right use was looking to go in there, then we've got a whole other issue to deal with.
We'd be back before you, yeah. And again, that's, I guess, what I'm looking to do is, I realize everybody's time is valuable, and I'm trying to just, hopefully, we can go forward as efficiently as we can.
But I'm going to allow counsel to-
I'm not going to say much I promised. I think when you talk to the town's engineer, ask them about your specific waiver and sit down with them about what a special permit application would look like that you don't have already here. If it's just repackaging it, I mean, he will be able to, and you can do it too.
I think we have most of it. That's why I asked.
You may.
So that's, yeah.
I mean, literally, whatever is required by that process and it's laid out in the bylaw, that's what needs to get submitted.
Excuse me, Eric Hodge, Three Bates Street. You're breaking up again.
Yeah, if I, I took that applicant after he said, consultant that he, if they information me as quick as possible so we can-
You broke up again.
Can you hear me?
It's starting to get better again.
Try again. All right, how's that?
I think good, but-
Yeah. Can you hear me, Eric?
No, it's breaking up.
I can't hear you either. I'm sorry, I just wanted to talk to anybody last. Yeah, but the transfer might print differently.
Bill, can I try to mic maybe?
Anyways, get with Jeff. Make sure, and have him give me the information as soon as possible so I can get it to her. And then if you want to have a discussion with that counsel. Do you have our council's information?
I think so, because I saw your word copied on some of the correspondence, so I would assume.
And I spoke with one of your attorneys.
Merrick, she spoke with Merrick. Oh, Dawson.
Well, his name is Dawson.
Peter Dawson, yeah.
Peter Dawson. I spoke with him. I don't know which one of your attorneys he is.
Yeah, because he was referencing other attorneys, and so we just need to know which one to contact.
Mr. Dawson would probably be the best person to contact. His letter certainly-
Just have whoever you want reach out to me.
But we can figure that out.
So.
Motion to continue, April twelve, seven thirty.
You cannot make it.
I have town name such that on April twelve.
Um, well, you and I, yeah, you and I will speak before then and, and I'll let the board know anything that you offer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, James.
All those in favor?
Aye.
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
John, aye.
Bill, Bill Ambrosino, aye. Damon? Oh, he can't hear us.
Sorry.
Yep, all right. He heard, okay. All right, so close this matter for tonight. Hopefully we can get this rectified, but, um...
What's the date of meeting?
April 12th.
April 12th.
At 7:30?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can we ask a question?
On April 12th, the meeting's been closed.
I can redo that.
And then they'll get to the door.
Do we do the, um, set the public hearings for the three items? That'll be fast because then you have Fred Laffham for Silver, for Mesko Springs.
That was an odd one.
You don't want to set those April 12th, right?
Um...
There's going to be a lot.
Uh, those have to be, uh, those are quick changes, the two zoning bylaws. Um, actually, I shouldn't say that. Zoning addition to section 5.05.
You get the special permits?
That's the one for the town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you guys are not aware, um...
I have a calendar.
Which one is it here? 5.05.
Yep.
Gentlemen, um, I've been, uh, working with, uh, the town administrator and the, um, and the Realtor, and the Realtor has a zoning office he's been, she, they've been working with, and we have a change to the, uh, zoning is, is to, uh, the property at, it'll be an overlay district for the property at, do we have that drawing?
Yeah, right here. I do it.
On the back page here.
Yeah. Um...
North Avenue.
To the property. So if you guys do it, did she give you a copy of the bylaw?
Yep.
Okay.
I got everything.
All right, um, so, uh, I think we just need to set a public hearing day for it.
Correct.
Uh, we'll be, uh, and then the discussion will be about the overlay for the over 55 community.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for April 25th for zoning bylaw.
April 12th.
12. You're going to do it the same day?
Huh?
Are we going to do it the same day as those other two?
Um, yeah, according to Jack, it has to be on April 12th.
Yeah, because it's got to make the town meeting.
Yep.
So what time do you want to do that?
All, all we have to do is put it seven o'clock and then you can do however you want to take it in line.
Um...
We do them all at seven now, Barry.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that way, uh...
Okay, who seconds?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Barry, aye.
John, aye.
Bill Ambrosino, aye.
Damon, aye.
Okay.
All right, then the second one, um, the zoning, zoning bylaws, um...
Zan Maza.
Zan Maza.
The one you have there.
Yeah, it's just an update. It's very small. It's, uh, she's got a copy of the whole bylaw right here, but there's only a few subsequent changes that pertain to, uh, the low impact development. I think there were sort of mistakes and changes that were made before. There's only like two or three locations where the incorrect section was identified, so, um, that shouldn't, that shouldn't take long.
So does that have to be on the 12th?
Uh, yeah, because they've got to get on the warrant.
So who's making motion?
Make a motion to, uh, set a zoning bylaw update for April 12th, 7 o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
John, aye.
Bill Ambrosino, aye.
Damon, aye.
Thank you, Damon.
All right.
Now we have one more small one. Uh, it's a home business special permit.
Uh, yes. Could I take, could I take a look at that real quick?
So what is it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
166...
They want to do a dog, um...
You want to do a kennel or?
Yeah, no, not a kennel. They want to breed.
They want to breed.
Dog.
Um, and this is a use as of right or no? This is a special permit, so it's not as of right. I thought we had something I used table under agriculture, under dogs. Hold on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'll have to put that one off till 25th. We don't have time for that. Get the next one. That's a special permit.
Okay, hold on a minute.
There's two special permits, so one or...
April 26th.
You have it at Seven Cape Road and 166 Millville Street.
Yeah, across out, I meant to cross out Seven Cape because they didn't bring it, submit it to me in time.
So we just got 166 Millville Street for the special permit?
Yeah, she's got 166 Millville Street.
So we just got to set a public hearing date.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for 166 Millville Street to April 26th at 7 o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
James Quirk, aye.
Barry, aye.
Bill Ambrosino, aye.
Damon, aye.
All right, yeah, last but not least, 11.
We have the green one and that.
We got the 81P still?
Yeah, we just have the 81P as well.
Yep. Oh, take this back to...
How are we doing, Fred?
Take this back to, I've looked at that book enough tonight.
He fell through.
What do I do with my glasses? What?
Or do you want to do Fred first?
We'll do Fred first.
Hurry up.
Hey, Bill, before, before you go on to the next item, can I just ask a super quick question?
Sure.
Um, with respect to the April 12th continuance for 35 Cape Road, can we have town council in, in attendance that night as well?
Uh, she will not, she just advised me she will not be able to make it, but her and, her and I will, uh, have spoken, um, will have gone over considerably with, uh, with detail as to what I advise the board. And, and just keep in mind, Eric, that, you know, these, these legal issues, um, that's why, what council provides insight for and, but the board as a whole, while I may do a lot of the talking, all these members of the board have their own opinion and have their own votes, and it isn't up to me to sway them one way or the other. So they get to hear the information and then when the vote's counted, you know, that's where it rests. And, um, it, you know, some of the issues that we've talked about, um, I think the most pressing right now, the ones we discussed tonight, um, but, um, I'll advise you at the next meeting what are finding of.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, uh, I had some issues that were, were relevant to our, our prior discussion that hadn't been previously brought up, um, and I had hoped to be able to present tonight, but given that we've closed the, the public hearing, I guess I'll wait till the next public hearing.
Yeah, if you would, if you would.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Eric. Have a good night.
Aye.
Oh, are we ready?
Yep.
I, I don't know. I don't know. Jeez, these meetings are killing me. I'm too old for this stuff.
Yeah, that's tough.
Why am I doing this for another five years?
Last day that you can withdraw.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll be with you.
Um, thank you for, uh, putting us on your...
I think Bob Sweet's due for, you know, a couple of years in his chair over here.
Uh, we are here, we're, we're talking about these four lots here, uh, and, uh, you can see this is Locust Hill Drive, Mesko Springs, Locust Hill Drive. And we have, uh, these four lots are ready to build. We have all the permits. We've done a lot of work over the, over the winter. We've, we've got, uh, all the structural drainage in the street installed. We have, uh, all the blasting on this side slope has been completed, uh, and the rock has been removed. Right now what they're doing is they're removing the loose rock from the slope. Uh, that is, uh, this section is where we'd like to work our way out of. All these lots have been sold and, um, the bond has been posted for this section of road up to 20 plus 50, which is right about here.
Yep.
Uh, and we're hoping, uh, we want to build on this momentum. We have, uh, a lot of interest on the rest of the lots for Locust Hill, and we'd just like to build our way out of this section, which is the section that's next to the, uh, the butters that are residing in those homes that were built as you come in.
So, and the section of road there, uh, from before, um, that's all to grade, that's going to be ready to pave soon or?
Listen, we are, we're, we're going to pave when the plants open. So what we're asking for, rather than make us wait a few weeks, we can, we can get out of this section of, uh, construction and building a few weeks sooner if we can get building permits prior to paving.
Are you looking for lot releases?
Uh, I think we got all the lots released, but we're looking for just that sequence where we're within weeks, a handful of weeks of the plant's opening.
So I think it's the building permits you have.
Yeah, the building permits is what we...
I think we've held up the building permits. We allowed some sight...
Foundations and the, well, right.
Yeah, we had allowed some site work done.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as long as, as you guys continue to do what you say you're going to do and follow, you know, follow the script. I mean, this has been a project that's been in existence for, God, nine years now. I mean, we've got to get it done. So I'm not opposed to allowing the building permits. We'll be keeping close watch as we did to the others and, um, just, uh, you know, as soon as you can get that road paved, um, please do.
Oh, and it's, it will be paved when those plants open.
Hey, Bill, uh, Fred?
Does anybody, does anybody have any questions on that or?
Yeah, this is Damon. Are you gonna, you'll have it paved before you're looking for occupancy, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, that's, uh, that's required anyway according to the, yes, we will.
Just making sure, okay.
Yeah, I know this is a little bit out of the box, but if we can continue this going, um, you know, I, I'd rather continue this project than get it done. Like I said...
They've done a good job up there.
Yeah, they've done a real good job up there and that's why you get a little more leeway. Um, but let's just, you know, this project has been, Sydney, I've been staring at this thing for, since I've been on the board. Actually, it was longer than that because this was approved before I was on the board.
Oh, yes.
So this is going back like 13 years.
Been through the Great Recession and the pandemic.
Yeah. So I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see it done. I'd like to see it completed myself, so.
They have an opportunity this year to, to really advance this project.
Yeah, we already allowed the lot release, so I think it's just, uh, Gail, if you could, uh, scope a letter to, uh, the building department, just stating that we'll now, now allow the, the, uh, building permits.
We don't have to make a motion or anything, right?
No, I don't think we, we already released a lot, so there's really nothing to allow an emotional, so.
Have a nice day.
You want the lot numbers for your...
Uh, you can give them.
9, 69, 61, and 66.
69, 61, and 66.
66, right?
Yep.
Yep. You got it. Thank you.
You love that?
Thanks. Keep it moving.
Oh, you got it. We will. No, that's it.
Okay, so you don't have to want to make a motion or anything?
No, there doesn't need to be because we had to release a lot. It's just, we extended the builder some, uh...
Okay, so...
You know, they earned the right to, uh, do some site work on those. Now it just, I don't want to hold up the building of the houses for three weeks until pavement, plant open.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Guys, this is Bruce Wheeler. Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem, Bruce.
No problem.
Talk to you later.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too, sir.
All we have is the 81P left.
Yep.
Did you guys enjoy your night out?
Should have brought the popcorn.
I'll tell you.
Your steakhouse stinks.
The ego.
He looks like a pup tonight.
No, he's the, he's the, uh...
He's organizing. He's thinking.
I can't hear you.
It's a correct date.
Oh.
Didn't even check over the 81P.
Sorry, guys. I had to take that boat by the once.
Did you, did you guys discuss the 81P?
Not yet.
We've got to look at it.
We've got to look at it.
And you're signing?
I'm signing.
Okay. All right, this already has, uh, as I understand it, the ZVA already approved a variance on this.
This is for...
It was ready to put, uh, it's going to be two lots now, it's only one lot.
Okay.
This is going to be a conforming lot now.
Yes, we just changed it a lot.
This is a conforming lot. This has got a variance to get in.
Make a motion to set the 81P for your partner.
Second.
Dimensional, everything's okay. What is this, a pipeline?
Yes.
Damon, you still there?
So this is going to be the access to?
No, the access is only here.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Wait. This guy, in this house here, they brought it to the building, so you gave it to him.
James Quirk, aye.
A variance.
Barry, aye.
So which one will we, uh...
Say aye.
Roll call.
Aye, John.
Say aye.
Just say aye.
Aye. So we're changing on...
Does it become a non-conforming?
James, don't.
You like, you got a roll.
Yes, I have stayed with him.
We get this life.
Oh, you are staying? Okay.
This guy, this life, this, and this one, this life.
We re-cut.
Five, we brought it out.
Okay.
We get a variance to get into what it has. It's going to be a drive, a conforming lot.
The corner of eight, how many drives?
The variance, we add.
That's right.
I got it.
No more common drive.
No, those are common drives.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, well, that's a conforming lot, so.
Close the...
Thank you.
Second, third, fourth.
So he's building right next to, uh, the, uh, the, uh...
How's it right there?
I'm not looking there and seeing him.
Well, the foundation.
So he has, uh...
I got it.
Check fire.
I'm fire.
It's broken, that's done.
I'll get the data.
Okay.
I got the data.
Big one.
Require approval.
Doesn't include...
Is it a non-conforming lot that's...
No, they're all conforming. Uh, one had, it has approval for access from the ZVA, so, um, but other than that, the lots are conforming.
Well, it doesn't have to go through a review process.
Yeah, once it has, uh, the, uh, 81P process, approval not required, always make sure it meets dimensional requirements, stuff like that.
You have a 16,000 square foot of upland.
Yeah.
Frontage.
Doesn't really require us to, um, it's just like if you were, if you had two lots where you live there and you wanted to split them?
Yeah.
Um, and you had enough frontage and you had enough land area, you would do an 81P. It's called an approval not required. And as long as you split those so that dimensionally meet the town requirements, I mean, we can't deny it once, because it's as of right. So it would just take, they gotta, they need to be able to record it at the registry. So to do that, they need an 81P to record it at the registry.
John, I, hey, I don't. Motion to do a jam.
Oh.
Oh, who did?
Aye. I'm in motion.
Oh, second?
Very second.
Jimmy seconded.
All right.
Barry, aye.
All right, have a good night.
Night.
Have a good night, guys. Thanks.